Good afternoon, everyone. The time being 2:00. I'm going to call to order the 227th Brookfield Town Meeting. Will you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join me in a moment of silence for the townspeople who died in the last year This time, I'd like to introduce our selectmen.
Bill, we can't hear you back here.
I'll do the best I can. Can you hear me now? Is that better?
Yes, sir.
I'll just stay close to the microphone. Hey, it's a new venue, guys. I'm doing the best I can. At this time, we're going to introduce the selectmen. Chairman Richard Zachar. Rich Shoretta is not here at this time. And Brian Rovershaw. Are there any new residents present? If so, if you would like to stand and state your name and address, we would appreciate it.
Peter Mello, West Cove Road.
Welcome to town.
Edgatia Two Curry's Way.
Welcome, Max. Anyone else? Thank you for coming. Is there anyone present who is not a registered voter of the town of Brookfield? I don't see any, but I will remind people that it is a misdemeanor to vote if you are not entitled to do so. I'm not aware of any announcements at this time. Does anybody have any announcements that they haven't told me about? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the town rules.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion passes. I hate reading the rules. I already announced the results of the town election at one of the selectmen's meetings, but let me do so again now because this is when we usually do so. For selectmen, Richard Zachar had 84 votes. Mark Stengel had 17 votes. I declare Richard Zachar the winner. For trustee of trust funds, Richard Norton had 21 write-in votes, and I declare him the winner. For cemetery trustee, Craig Evans had 36 write-in votes, and I declare him the winner. For planning board, Tim Strauss had 83 votes. Gus Stratton had 15 write-in votes, and I declare them the winners. For auditor, Susan Raven had 6 write-in votes, and I declare her the winner. Finally, for supervisor of the checklist, Mary Ann Lynch had 93 votes, and I declare her the winner. Regarding Article II, Amendment I passed by a vote of 73 to 31, and Amendment II passed by the vote of 76 to 27. We will now begin with the warrant, starting with Article number four. Four is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be deposited into the road and bridge repair capital reserve fund. Brian, do you wish to make that motion?
I do.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Brian, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
This is the capital reserve fund that we allocate money for our road projects, predominantly paving projects within town. This year, we are not planning any paving projects per se. We're trying to build the trust account back up, and we will look to begin, resume paving projects again next year. So the $75,000, it would be an investment back into that trust account to get it back up. So we begin to do some road projects again next year. That's it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Number five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500 to be deposited into the heritage fund. Brian, do you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Yes, I second.
Thank you. Brian, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, just really quickly. We're looking at the $500 into the Heritage Trust Fund account. This is an account that the Heritage Fund controls. Usually, we use these funds for certain projects, like the townhouse, schoolhouse, or any kind of special education projects that we're going to undertake. For instance, this year, we're going to be taking the stenciling from the wall within the townhouse. That stenciling needs to be traced, and then we need to go ahead and have that carved out, you know, prior to the painting of the wall. So that is the project going to cost a little under $500, but these would be the funds the Heritage Fund would use in order to go ahead and pay for that kind of work. That's it. Thank you.
Very good. Is there any further discussion over here?
Doug Vanderpoel. I just wanted to ask you about the holes in the ceiling up there. Is that going to be part of that project?
Doug, there's a microphone in the center of the room if you'd like to use it.
Are the holes in the ceiling of the town hall, are they going to be repaired? And is that part of your project?
That is a separate project. But those are being repaired. Plaster is actually actively working in there right now. So the plaster should be done within the next couple of weeks. All holes should be filled. The plaster will be perfect, and we will be, next step would be painting the town hall.
Now, are that closed, the holes on the right side in the wall where the light's up?
Yes, all holes, all plaster will be perfect.
Okay.
Those are perfect. Yep.
They've really done an impressive job. When the park gets finished, people should see it. We had a chance to look at it during the town election. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. The next order, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 to be deposited into the townhouse repair capital reserve fund. Rich, would you like to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Rich, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yes, as we're... Can you hear me?
You might want to get closer to the mic.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Rose, make it louder. Can you hear me? Is that better? There's thumbs up. Thumbs up. Thumbs up. While we're talking about the townhouse, we had a plan to repair it. We put siding on it. We put heat into it. We reworked the electricity. We think we have about $20,000 additional money that we have to raise to wrap the job up based upon current estimates. So with $20,000 left to be raised, we're looking to raise $10,000 this year and $10,000 next year. So this $10,000 would go into the trust fund to work on the townhouse.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. The next item, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for repair of windows in the townhouse and authorize the withdrawal of said sum from the townhouse repair capital reserve fund. Rich, do you wish to make that motion?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Rich, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes. This is a repeat from last year. We just never got it done because of the COVID epidemic. But you'll notice that the taxes were raised last year, and if you look at the wording of the warrant article, it says to withdraw the money, which means the money's in the bank. We're taking it out. We're looking for authorization to spend it. Well, we have an estimate to repair the windows, so it's $10,000. We'll try to get it done this summer if the person that's doing the work becomes available. Right now, we spent the winter in Florida, trying to avoid socializing with people.
Is there any further discussion on this article? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. The next article is number eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000 for interior plaster work in the townhouse and authorize the withdrawal of said sum from the townhouse repair capital reserve fund. Rich, do you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I second.
Rich, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes. This is very similar to Article number seven. It's a repeat from last year. We're just reaffirming that the town wants us to continue to do this work. The plaster is in there right now doing the work. And you'll notice that, again, it is, the taxes were raised last year. We are not putting money away. We are taking it out of a trust fund. So it's just authorization to do the work, which we started already. We paid for it last year.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,000 to be deposited into the property reevaluation expendable trust fund. Brian, do you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Thank you. Brian, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, briefly. We pay Rod Wood as our assessor in town. Rod will do a reassessment of the entire town property every four or so years. We place money aside into a trust account, so when Rod does this overall town property revaluation, we have majority of the money set aside, and we pay him in full. And that's what the $6,000 will go to, is that trust account to rebuild that, because he just recently did a complete property reval. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? You guys are easy today. I appreciate this. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Article number 10, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $10,000 for professional conservation of a town record document and to fund this appropriation by authorizing withdrawal of $3,000 from the records preservation capital reserve fund with a balance of $7,000 to be raised by taxation. Brian, do you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. You had me worried there for a minute. Brian, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. Last year, Craig Evans gave us a pretty nice demonstration on the town archive books and what they entail and what age does them. These are the records that we've been keeping and maintaining since the beginning of the town's incorporation. We are onto the third book. That is a rather large book, and he did give a demonstration to the board of selectmen at a meeting, probably a month or two ago. He's working with a outfit in Boston that does this sort of work and has done the other private books for us. They will go ahead and they will restore the book fully, and they will then also add the information onto electronic format, so we have preservation both ends. We would go ahead and pull $3,000 from the current trust account that was used to go ahead and restore these archives, and would raise an additional $7,000 via taxation for the total of $10,000. That is the current estimate from the preservation. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Number 11, to see if the town of Brookfield will vote to authorize this selectman to appoint two volunteer representatives from the town to serve on the communications district planning committee for the purposes of drafting a communications district agreement under New Hampshire RSA Chapter 53G Communications District. Rich, do you wish to make that motion?
I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Rich, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes. As some of you folks may know, we are struggling to get internet service throughout the town. And actually, the county is struggling to get better internet service throughout the county. So the county communities have joined together to form what is called Carroll County Broadband Committee. And what we're trying to do is leverage the county as a customer to have someone committed to provide service to unserved areas. What this warrant article is about is obtaining two volunteers to work with the rest of the county on the committee to form the bylaws for this communications district. And it would be similar to a water district or a school district where people bond together, develop the specs and the bylaws, and present that to the town next year to see if we would like to join the district. So this year is just a case of, do we want to have two volunteers work to work on the bylaws? Now, before we move ahead, I should tell you Atlantic Broadband is the company that serves Wolfboro. And this past week, they sent the selectman an email saying they would like to have a franchise to provide some service to some part of the town, not the complete town, but this void that we have on Route 109. They are interested in providing service into that void. And that void runs from, just about got it there, it was Red Barn all the way up to Wolfboro. That part of the town, he has no service. The email said, we'd like to start talking about a franchise. So that's all we have is a piece of email that says, let's talk about a franchise. There's a lot of work to be done. But I wanted to put that on the table before we voted on this article. So while we're still working on this committee, we're also still working trying to get service from ABP or Spectrum to continue the deployment. So we've been working on all those issues. So this article is about moving forward with the county broadband committee and getting a couple of volunteers to help draft some bylaws.
Very good. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Article number 12, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate $54,000 towards the repair of Moose Mountain Road Bridge and authorize the withdrawal of said sum from Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund II, previously established 3/12/1991 and recharacterized in 2016. Brian, do you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Yes, I second that.
Very good. Brian, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, please. We currently have $54,000 in a trust fund. This trust fund was originally designated for highway equipment. We had redesignated the fund in 2016 because we no longer buy highway equipment, and this trust fund remains up. There was approximately $54,000 in there. We are looking to get the bridge project done this summer when the water level is low as possible. We have some interest from at least one contractor, and this money is already raised. It's in the trust account. We, again, are just looking at the authorization to withdraw this money to fund the repairs to the bridge. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Article number 13, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the remaining balance of up to $81,000 towards their repair of Moose Mountain Road Bridge and authorize the withdrawal of said sum from the Moose Mountain Capital Reserve Fund I. Brian, do you wish to make that motion?
Yes, I do.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Rich. Brian, do you wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, briefly. This is piggybacking on Article 12. This is the other trust fund that we had created to fund the bridge repairs when we knew this job was coming down the pipe. So this $81,000 is already money in the bank. We're looking to just be okay to withdraw this money to fund the repairs that we are looking again to do hopefully this summer. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Number 14, to see if the town of Brookfield will vote in favor of providing an annual stipend in the amount of $1,200 to the planning board chair for duties performed in that capacity. Rich, do you wish to make that motion?
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Very good. Rich, do you wish to speak to it?
Yes. Planning Board, like the other committees in town, is one of the very important committees. They meet monthly. They draft our warrant article, our zoning amendments. They work on our master plan, and the bulk of that work is carried by the chairman of that board. We believe many hours are put in monthly to organize that work, and we think it would be fair to provide a stipend of $1,200 a year for the chairman.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion passes. Number 15, to see if the town will vote to adopt the provisions of RSA 7216 through RSA 7272 inclusively, which provide for an optional property tax exemption from the property's assessed value for property tax purposes for persons owning real property which is equipped with solar energy systems intended for use at the immediate site. Such property tax exemptions shall be the amount equal to 100% of the assessed value of qualifying equipment under these statutes. Renewable energy property tax exemption, RSA 7216 to 72, permits cities and towns to offer exemptions from local property taxes for certain renewable energy installations. These include solar systems, thermal and photovoltaic, wind turbines, and central wood fire heating systems. Wood stoves and fireplaces are not included. The goal of the exemption is to create a tax-neutral policy within the municipality that neither increases an individual's property tax nor decreases the higher property taxes for installing a renewable energy system. And since there is no net reduction in municipal tax revenues, other taxpayers in the municipality are not affected. 125 or 234 towns in New Hampshire have some type of tax exemption. Mr. Berry, I believe this is your amendment?
Yes.
Would you like to make this as a motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Mr. Berry, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Okay, I'm nervous. In the town of Brookfield, I believe we only have four people who have put in solar. And as the state of New Hampshire has stated, they've gone ahead and authorized tax exemptions if possible. Currently, in Brookfield, the four of us are not being taxed with our solar, which is fine. That way, I can go ahead and justify all my expenditures and such. It just helps out. But renewable energy, we need to work on it. We need to volunteer for it. And by passing this, it will say that Brookfield is in favor of renewable-type energies. In Carroll County, we have eight cities that have got one of these exemptions, and it's about 57% of New Hampshire has this type of exemption. So hopefully, Brookfield will join. But it's not costing you anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich, did you want to speak?
Yes. The selectmen's position is, we feel it's great, and we support the green initiative. And we think it's great that someone has the resources to install energy-efficient systems. And we think it's great that you've recovered the income from that electricity. But what we don't think is great is that we take the value of that asset off our tax rolls. Because once you take that asset off the tax rolls, as we have to create money for our budget, that load is shifted to the rest of the town. And in our opinion, that's just not fair. And that's why we don't support the amendment, the warrant article.
Very good. Is there further discussion? In the back.
Doesn't that exactly just cover the cost of the solar grid, but not necessarily part of any continuous property tax? Is that correct?
If anyone knows the answer to the question, they may come to the mic and answer it. Otherwise, people can't hear them.
I'll just hold it.
You have a mic.
The way the taxes are allocated in town is you take the value of all assessed property, swimming pools, fencing, and all property goes into our total value of property. That is used to determine the tax rate. If you reduce that number by starting to give exemptions, then that tax burden has to be shared by someone else. Now, it may not be significant initially, but this is unbounded. Once you start, anybody that puts one in, you lose the asset that's been put into the real estate.
Sir, I have a thought that because...
Are you requesting a follow-up question?
Yes, I am.
You may answer after.
My wife and I were considering solar power for our facility. And from what I understand, this is not, the benefit of the solar power does not improve to the owner alone. It goes back in, whatever excess is generated goes back into the grid. So I think to tax the homeowner would not be fair because you're, basically what you're doing is taxing a utility that eventually in time has public implications, public utility implications. So I personally, I would agree with Mr. Perry that this exemption should go through for that purpose because it's not a pure asset that's owned specifically by the owner. The owner does not benefit from the solar panel alone.
With my understanding that the power that was generated is used by the owner. Maybe I'm mistaken.
It's used by the owner, but whatever assets you have goes back into the grid.
Green.
And it's given into ever-source. And you're allowed, you're given a credit on addition, there's certain, because the solar panels have different efficiencies throughout the year based on the position of the sun, there's times when you're going to generate more electricity than you're going to use. And from what we were told by a company called Revision Energy, that that goes back into the system, into the, it goes back into the public utility, that can be credited to the future.
I don't want to let the discussion be dominated by just a couple of people, and I believe there's a hand up here in the front.
Right, Fraser, Library Road. I just want to clarify one point. Our assessor currently does not assess solar panels, correct, Fraser?
He does not assess them because he's not sure it's a liability or an asset. As time tells, these could be liabilities.
Right. So but right now, today, if we pass this today, there's going to be nothing taken off our evaluations in the townwide because it's currently not being assessed today. If in the future, the assessor decides that they should be assessed, this would prevent solar, any existing solar panels or new ones from being assessed. But again, it's not going to be a net loss today. This has a net zero effect on us today and for the future because it's, the assessor might hold his opinion for years to come. And in the future, if there are solar panels all over the place and we feel the assessment is an issue, we can always repeal this at a later date if it becomes a problem. Again, there's only four panels currently in the town anyway. This is, to encourage people to get solar, has a net zero effect, none affect our pocketbooks at all today. at all today, and in the future, if it becomes a problem, we can come back and talk about it again. But I support this. Thank you. Over here, Mr. Goff.
If it's not being assessed today, and could possibly be assessed in the future, I suggest we deal with it at that point in time. What you're creating is a huge void and a might maybe. Why worry about it now? We have other more pressing things to consider.
Very good. Any further discussion? Mr. Berry.
True, it's not being affected right now, but this will encourage new people coming in, and people as they retire, if they have to pull money out of their 401K and they don't need it, that would be something that they could put in and help us with our renewable energy.
Wait a minute.
Just like to know, is there any limit to the amount of solar panels that you can put on your properties? Is it limited to a certain size, or can you put a whole array of solar panels in your yard and possibly make money off it?
Does that...
Do you want to know the answer to the question?
Yes, it's limited by the transformer that's mounted on the pole in front of your property that supplies the grid. So if you have 10 kilowatt transformer at the street that supplies your home, that's your limit of what you can output.
Thank you. Go on, girl.
If it's currently not being taxed, having an exemption for future, I don't understand how that would encourage somebody to put it in. It doesn't make any sense to me. You either believe in it, want to do it for the good of whatever your beliefs are, but having a tax exemption for it should not be one of those beliefs.
Mr. Berry, we spoke a couple lines, I'm going to save it if you all want to speak before I recognize you again. Go over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Mike Moore, Leiford Road. I just want to remind the meeting that we have, that we do not in town have a very diverse tax base. Much of the property in town is in current use or in conservation, and there's a lot of pressure on the property owners to be paying taxes to support our town budget. So 125 out of 234 towns in the state, that makes sense to me, because there are other towns like us in the state who do not have a diverse tax base. I imagine, this is just speculation, that a lot of the towns that have adopted this are already in the practice of taxing the solar systems, but also have a more diverse base that they can draw from. So I agree with some of my fellow residents who have said, if it's not being assessed and taxed now, then why are we putting an exemption in place? I think we need to leave our options open and not reduce the value of our tax base in town any further. I've lived in town 20 years and watched more and more of what has been taxable over the decades come off the rolls because of conservation and current use shifts in how things are being taxed. The other thing I would say is, solar systems are not inexpensive. You can spend 10, 20, 30, $50,000 on a solar system, and if I were to improve my home by 10, 20, 30, $50,000, I would expect to be assessed that new value and pay the taxes on it. So I don't believe that it's a good idea to exempt certain kinds of improvements if someone spends $30,000 to install a solar system in their home to exempt that. My final point is that, yes, you are generating surplus solar electricity at times during the seasons, but you are being essentially paid for that when you generate excess power. Your meter is actually running backwards, and you're paying less for your net electricity. So yes, you are generating power in a green or clean way, but you are also benefiting from that financially as a solar owner. Thank you.
Good show, Mike.
Nobody else wants to speak? I'll recognize you again, Mr. Berry, but I've already given you a few shots. I don't see anyone else, so go up to the mic and you can speak again. I'm sorry, I can't see your hands.
I can't hear.
Well, the microphones are not working.
Okay, now we're working. Did you want to speak? No, Mr. Berry, then you may speak.
It's true that we go ahead and, the electricity that my 26 panels generate, all of it goes into ever-source, and I sell it to them at one price, and I buy it back at a higher price. So they're making it better than I am. True, I do go ahead and have some months, of which I have a serial electric bill, but last month, I did have an electric bill because of the collapse and such. So it's just trying to set things up, and in my case, I'm looking for a budget, and if you're going to go ahead and tax me on the solar system that I put in, that was one thing that I was interested in. How much is it going to go up? My particular system, it was about 26 panels, it's about $10,000. So 30, 40? No. With mine, and that covers my house on the backside. So I'm not looking for fields of panels. It's just trying to, if other cities, towns within New Hampshire have gone ahead and set up a tax exemption process, why can't we try to encourage people to put renewable energy back into the system?
And then pay Wolfboro to get it back?
Mr. Goff, you know, I didn't recognize.
Sorry. I apologize.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
The bottom of the table is unsure, so we are going to have a revision vote. All those in favor, please raise their hands. I'm starting again. One, two, three, four. I count 11 hands up. All those opposed, raise your hands. I count 23, I'm sorry, I didn't get you guys up in the front. One, two, three, I count 27 nays. Are the motion carries. Next article is number 16. To see if the town of Brookfield, New Hampshire, will vote to change the classification of Curry's Way and Drew Farm Road from the current classification of private roads to town roads. Specifically, we request that the roads located in the Drew Farm subdivision off of Route 109 be accepted and maintained as town of Brookfield roadways. Mr. Goff, I understand that's your motion. Do you wish to make that as a motion?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, do you wish to speak at this time?
Yes.
Go ahead.
The road of Drew Farm, both Drew Farm and Curry's Way were put in around 2008, 2009 per state specs, and there was a very stringent oversight by the town officials at that time. It is now, the subdivision is built out now, there was one more lot to sell, and four more lots to build on, including the one to sell. So that makes 10 out of the 14 lots that are inhabited by people that have homes there, and we would like to have the town take over those. Right now, there was a covenant that says the developer is to turn it over to the association. We in turn would then turn it over to the town once we got that, and we're asking that the town accept that when it happens.
Very good. Mr. Zacker, I think you want to speak next.
Yes, yes, and the first thing I would like to do is make an amendment to that petition warrant article, which we were not allowed to do, because petition warrants go on the warrant as presented. And the amendment that I would like to make is, at the end of, the last sentence, Brookfield roadways add, "When the deed to the road is presented to the selectmen..." We don't want to get into a battle with the owner of the road, which is still the developer, if he doesn't want to give it to the town. So this phrase says that when, if the town votes to accept the road, if the town votes to accept the road, when the developer presents the deed to the selectmen, we'll take the road, but we won't go after them through eminent domain. So that's the purpose of that amendment.
Mr. Goff, do you wish to second the amendment?
I'll second the amendment.
Thank you. At this point in time, we're discussing the amendment and not the original article. Does anyone wish to speak to the amendment? Mr. Goff, you may do so.
I appreciate and support the amendment that was presented. I think it's a win-win for us as association members and a town. It protects both entities from any potential legal issues that may come forward in the future. There'll be no such sure what could happen, but I think this protects both entities, us and the town. I appreciate the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to remind Mr. Zacker to pass his written amendment to the clerk, because under our rules, that's how we accept amendments. Is there any further discussion about the amendment? Seeing none, are you ready for the vote on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The amendment is adopted. We're now discussing the warrant article as amendment. Is there any further discussion on the warrant article as amendment?
I think I can comment. Now the selectmen would support the warrant article.
Thank you.
We did not want to get involved in eminent domain situation, and that's why we said we didn't support with the amendment, and we're okay with it. We think the road's good, and we see no reason not to take it.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Article number 17. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the selectmen's recommended sum of $956,573 for the town operating budget. Said sum does not include special or individual articles addressed to this warrant. One of the selectmen might make that much.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Rich, do you wish to speak to your motion?
Yes, I guess there's, the first point is, the selectmen put in $1 to support the Wolfboro Rec Department, and we want to be very upfront about that. We got a lot of feedback last year that people were very disappointed that Brookfield could no longer participate fully in the rec department, specifically at the town beaches. So we put $1 in, we can change it today if we want to, and we wanted to have the discussion with the townspeople. They effectively had a petition warrant article submitted in Wolfboro two years ago that was very clear, that said, if you're not a Wolfboro resident, you can't use the beach, with a couple of minor exclusions, which meant Tufton Borough in Brookfield who participate in the recreation department couldn't use the beaches. So the question before the town is, do we want to fund it? We can put it in if we want to fund it, or do we want to leave it at $1 and not participate? After the initial feedback, I'll be honest, we got a lot of feedback from town people saying, hey, we still want to use, we still, we still want to put our kids into the programs and continue to work the beach issues, but we do want to participate in the rest of the Wolfboro program, which is the skiing and the summer camps and the other activities. So that is really the question before the town. And Brian, you have talked to them specifically about trying to get us in over there. Do you want to, you have any comments?
It would take the board of selectmen in Wolfboro to put another petition, to put in another warrant article out in order to allow Tufton Borough and Brookfield to use the Wolfboro Town Beaches. The rec department has nothing to do with it, but the rec department is being affected by the decision by, of the Wolfboro voters to keep us off the beaches. This money goes directly towards the rec department in Wolfboro for the activities that are listed in their book, everything from sailing, skiing, ice skating, and it offsets the costs that we pay the Wolfboro rates. We also are allowed to get the preferable online registration times. So if we do not pay for this, we go back to not having the preferable rates and not having the ability to register early.
Very good. That's not the only item in the budget. Anything in the budget is open for discussion. Over here.
If we participate, do you use microphones?
The town, of course, can present any amendment that it likes.
The law has been in the past.
We wanted the selectmen to make the answer to that. She wanted to know what the amount was in the past.
I don't, I don't think, I don't think anything is free. The things are discounted to all residents, all residents, and grandchildren and extended families. But what we understand is more important is, when it comes to register for the programs, because you are a resident or a participant in the program, you get early registration. So you're sure that the children can participate with their friends in the various sessions. That's my understanding. I personally never participated.
Brian?
I think the primary question was, how much does it cost the town yearly? I believe it's roughly $4,200. Mary Lou, is that about right?
Yes, $4,216 is what we've paid in the past, because COVID last year, they reduced that amount, but this year it could be a higher amount again of $4,216.
Page 18 in the budget, under Parks and Recreation, Wolfboro is the line, page 18.
Thank you very little. She said it would be lined in the past, it's $4,216 for those with trouble hearing. I'm reminded to ask people to come to the mic so that the people can hear you. And then, Mr. Dawson, after that.
My name's Eric Cobine, 118 Governors Road. I can speak a little bit on the savings to families. This past year, we participated in the ski program with season passes. It saved my family, there was three of us, $160 discounted rate, and also when you sign up for things like soccer, it was just a $30 savings. But it's not just kids' programs, there are adult programs as well, and I encourage people to use them through the rec. I knew they do bus trips to family parks, things like that, and so on. Can I make a motion now?
Yes, you may make a motion at this time.
I'd like to make a motion to add the $4,216 back to the fund of the Parks and Recreation Wolfboro line.
Okay, you've got that in writing, so you may hand it to the clerk. Is there a second to the amendment?
I'll second that.
Okay, very good. I heard several seconds, but I'll recognize you over here. At this point in time, we will be discussing the amendment, and the amendment is to add $4,216 to the town budget to fund this particular law. Is there further discussion on the amendment? Mary Lou, I'll recognize you first, as you may have information for the town.
So I would like to just see if he would change his amendment to be...
So I would like to just see if he would change his amendment to be $4,215, because there's already a dollar on that budget line. I know it's stupid, but that's what I propose.
Would you accept that as a funding amendment?
Yes, I will.
Can the clerk make the notation on the written documents she received? A yes or no would suffice. Can you note that out at this paper, please?
Are you okay with Virginia?
Thank you. I appreciate that. We are now discussing the amendment adding $4,215 to the town budget. Is there further discussion? Over here and then over there.
Yes. Is it used? I just have a question. Is there any records of the town actually taking advantage of this opportunity from Wolfboro?
This is a wonderful discussion. It's come of a town meeting multiple times over the years.
Well, I don't know. I must have missed it.
I don't believe the town collects any statistics on them. Over here.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Moore, Life of Road. I'd like to speak in favor of the amended budget amount. And I can also speak to the gentleman's question. Lived in town 20 years, raised one, still raising two more boys. We use it extensively, and the 80-plus children in town currently, I know many, many of my friends and their kids use the Wolfboro Rec and benefit from essentially this participation. So I want to speak in favor of continuing to do so through our budget. And I do want to encourage our selectmen, first of all, thank them for continuing to advocate for us with the town beach situation. In case you're not aware, I'll mention to the meeting that Wakefield also instituted a prohibition last summer so that only Wakefield residents can use their town beaches. So we are essentially a town without a beach. And it's an imperative, I think, that we convince the folks in Wolfboro to let us, as part of the recreation program, use their beaches. I will say there are a couple new selectmen in Wolfboro who we've had personal conversations with already, who are very much receptive to the idea. So I would encourage you to resume your conversations with the new board over in Wolfboro. Thank you.
I thank you for that. I also can vouch that my children used the program when they were growing up, but my children are now grown up. Is there another hand in the back? I think I saw another hand. Must be seeing things. Over here.
I'm in favor of the amendment. My kids have grown up in that program yet. Of course, they are older now, but I would not discourage the younger generation being able to use that. So I am in favor of it.
Thank you. Further discussion? Over here, and then over here, and then over here.
I'm sorry if this is obvious to everybody else, but since the COVID, it says that we have a balance left of $2,951.
It says we didn't spend that.
Right. Can that go into the $4,000 now?
No, we zero our budget at the end of the year and start over. So that number, anything we didn't spend is used to reduce the tax rate.
Okay. All right. I thought maybe that would help. All right. Never mind.
It was a great question. I think you went next, and then Virginia's after that.
Earl's Way, 30 Currie's Way. My wife and I moved here about three years ago, possibly four now. And we're both retired, and we watch our budget very closely and only agree with things that we feel have significant impact. And anything that helps children have more activities, we definitely support. So my wife and I would both be in favor of this amendment.
Thank you for that. Virginia, you may go.
My children also took part in mostly everything in Wolfboro. They're both gone now. Don't live in town. They're older. But I completely agree with us taking care of this particular program, because the kids in this town need somewhere to go, things to do.
Very good. Thank you for that. Any other comments?
Go.
Go ahead.
Just briefly, the selectmen intentionally put this $1 in order to make this conversation happen, because we want to hear what people want. I too have kids go through the program. I personally also think if we stop funding it, it will make our bargaining position with the selectmen less tenable if we want to get back into the beaches. I think by paying into the program, it will give us some leverage to get back onto the beaches and have them consider doing a new warrant article next year for us. So again, personally, I am in agreement with this as well.
I don't believe our appropriating the money obligates you to spend it, so it does put you in a very good bargaining position, actually. Is there any other comments about the motion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? For voting on the amendment to add $4,215 to the town budget. Are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. That was easy. The motion carries. Do we have a new figure for the town budget, Mary Lou?
There was also another line item that needed to be fixed, so the new total is $953,788.
Mary Lou, we haven't adopted any other amendments yet, so if you'd like to make a motion to fix another line, you may do so at this time.
No, it was the way that the records were recorded with DRA, so one of the line items that was in the operating budget needed to be moved to the warrant article, so line for setting the budget. So that made the original budget of the $953 reduced to $949, and then we added the $4,215, which gives us $953,788.
Okay. I believe that the motion before the voters at this time is the original figure of 956573 plus the additional amount of 4,215, which by my addition is 960788. And at this point in time, I'd be glad to accept the motion to amend that item by an amount to correct it to the amount you say ought to be.
I'll make a amendment, and I'll write it for Virginia. So the amended amount for the operating budget should be $949,573.
Very good. The treasurer makes a motion to reduce the town budget to $949,573 to correct an error in the calculation. Is there a second to that motion? Thank you.
Mr. Zachar, I recognize you.
We just added 4,500. Did you put 4,500 on that number?
Forty-two, yes. So the total number is 953,788.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would you like me to take a five-minute recess so you can check the figures, because there would be significant consequences for us casting the wrong amount?
No, I think we're okay.
Okay, that's fine. If it's a problem, I'll give you a chance. Okay, the current amendment is reduce the amount of the town budget to $949,573 to correct an error.
Bill, the number you keep saying is not the number she's using.
Well, my hearing isn't the best either. Anybody knows that it's not the best. What number should I make, Sam?
That's what figured.
This is why we ask for the amendments in writing, because we get confusion.
So this is what was submitted to DRA. The operating budget is $949,573. You're adding $4,215 for $953,788.
I thank you for that, and I appreciate you getting my amendments in writing.
Certainly.
All right. The current motion is to correct the town budget total to $953,788 to correct an error. Is there further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, are you ready for the question? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion carries and the warrant article is amended. We're now voting on the amended article to approve the town budget in the amount of $953,788. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. At this point in time, is there any further business to come before the town meeting? In the back there, it's prepped.
I suggest that the town meeting recognize Rose Zachar for the conduct of the elections in September and November of 2020. All COVID-19 regulations were adhered to. People who wanted to vote were allowed to vote. The ballots were secure, and all the votes were counted correctly. These were probably the two most vital elections in our history. Thank you very much.
I thank you. I think we should vote on the motion. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. Is there further discussion or further items to come before the town at this time? Mr. Berry? Steve Berry, Life of Road. Several people have brought up how Brookfield no longer can use Wolfboro's water. And Wakefield says, hey, no one else but Wakefield can use their water. What about the lake that we have here in Brookfield? Oh, that's right. It's private. Everyone ought to take a look at that and say, hey, can Brookfield use Kingswood Lake? Thank you, Mr. Berry. Are there any further items to come before the town meeting? Seeing none, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. It was a very good meeting.
Thank you.